Hi Drew, hope you're feeling okay.
Thank you. I've had better days.
I'll bet.
We are live. Ozzy, we have picture-in-picture. It is 5:30, Madam Mayor.
Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening on February 6th. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person, to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in by phone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment period for each specific item. Item number one on the agenda has been pulled off at staff's request. As such, we will proceed to item two. Study Session Number Two: Pavement Management and Smooth Streets Program informational update with a presentation from Senior Engineer Stephanie Ginnelsberger.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Stephanie Ginnelsberger and I'm a Senior Engineer in Public Works. I am the manager of the city's pavement management program and smooth streets program. This presentation will provide an update on these programs, including a brief overview of the city's pavement assets and current condition, the pavement management strategies and scenarios for future funding of the pavement management program. Since we have very limited time this evening, I'm going to go through some of these overview slides quickly, but there will be an opportunity at the end to revisit them if desired. San Mateo's pavement assets consist of approximately 200 miles of streets and consists of a combination of residential, collector, and arterial streets, with 2/3 of them being residential and the remaining 3rd being collectors and arterials. It is important to note that these roads are one of the most heavily-used assets in the city. The city's pavement assets are managed through the use of a program called StreetSaver, which uses a pavement condition index, or PCI. PCI is a metric used to describe the condition of a section of roadway using a numeric scale. The index ranges from 100, which represents new pavement, to 0, which represents a failed roadway at the end of its useful life. This index is based on the extent and type of defects within a segment of pavement through a visual inspection, which occurs every 2 to 3 years. This inspection information is then entered into the StreetSaver program, and this program continually adjusts the PCI based on theoretical curves so that the PCI provided to staff in the StreetSaver is today's PCI of that street segment. PCI categories are very useful indicators for selecting and scheduling pavement maintenance treatments. These categories are very good, good, poor, and failed. It is important to note that the PCI is not a drivability index, and a failed street does not mean it is undrivable, but that it has deteriorated to a point where it needs to be reconstructed. There are several factors that affect a condition of pavement. Similar to the depreciation of a car when it leaves the sales lot, the condition and PCI of pavement deteriorates as soon as maintenance is performed. Factors that affect pavement condition are vehicle loads, weather, utility projects, high groundwater, and weak settling soils underneath, with utility projects and weakened settling soils being the key concerns, particularly in San Mateo. Most cities and counties in the Bay Area use the PCI system to manage their pavement assets. A recent article published in the SF Gate discusses the PCIs among the Bay Area agencies and highlights the challenges faced in maintaining roadways. As you can see, the city of San Mateo's average PCI has remained above the Bay Area average as well as the San Mateo County. Our PCI has decreased slightly recently due to COVID and staffing shortages, which delayed the design and construction of our paving projects. But we anticipate our PCI to raise over the next couple of years as we get back on track. This graph illustrates the rate of deterioration of pavement over time. As you can see, arterials and collector streets are more heavily-used and therefore deteriorate more rapidly than residential streets. The more deteriorated pavement becomes, the more expensive it is to restore it. For example, preventative maintenance treatments such as crack sealing and slurry sealing are appropriate treatments for pavement in the very good PCI range and are significantly less expensive than rehabilitation or reconstruction. As such, it is important to protect pavement early in its life using less costly treatments than to let it deteriorate to a condition where rehabilitation or reconstruction is required. This illustration shows how performing maintenance prior to reaching a poor or failed condition can prolong a street segment's life. As you can see, once a slurry seal or a grind and pave treatment is performed, the street segment's PCI is bumped back up towards 100. Using this strategy reduces the total cost spent over the same amount of time. Over 20 years, we can spend $1.3 million per mile by doing a seal and then a grind and pave compared to letting it deteriorate over 20 years, then spend $5.4 million a mile to reconstruct it. This strategy also keeps roads in the very good and good categories for a significantly longer period rather than having half of its useful life reside in the poor and failed categories. This map shows recent improvements San Mateo has completed in the last five years, and as you can see, it is pretty spread out over the entire city. We have been implementing a lot of crack sealing and slurry sealing, and as discussed in the previous slide, they are inexpensive road treatments and significantly help keep the city's PCI pretty high. This map shows the current PCI of each road segment maintained by the city. 84% of the segments fall within the very good or good categories, and there's 11% are in the poor category and the 5 are in the failed category. Of the failed streets, 5 miles are part of the Smooth Streets program are currently in construction or design. There are a number of factors that weigh into the selection of what street segments are included in our individual paving projects. We want to achieve our program-level goals, which include optimizing the use of funds to maintain the city's paving assets in a very good-to-good condition and to also minimize the failed street inventory. When we are planning and designing pavement projects, we do a large amount of coordination with other CIP projects and utility projects. We try to schedule our paving projects so that the utilities can repair or maintain their facilities before we place the new pavement. We also coordinate extensively with our transportation and traffic groups to consider incorporating pedestrian and bicycle improvements in our paving projects as well as incorporating green infrastructure improvements. Our current pavement management budget includes funding for both our pavement management program and our smooth streets program. Over half of the funding comes from the general fund and state funding, which is referred to Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account and the Local Streets and Roads Funds, with the remaining funding coming from gas tax and Measures S and W. So, a little more detail on our Smooth Streets program. This program has focused funding to a stress-failed and at risk-of-failing street segments identified in 2013, which consists of 22 miles. This program supports council's identified priority of reconstructing all failed streets by 2026. The streets in green on the map have been completed, and there are three more individual projects to complete the program. They are referred to as phases. Phase 3 is currently in construction and will be completed by the summer. Phase 4 will be out to bid in the next few weeks, and Phase 5 is anticipated to go out to bid in 2024. As I mentioned, there is a total of 22 miles included in the Smooth Streets program. We have completed 16 of those miles with 6 remaining to be reconstructed in our Phases 4 and 5 projects. We're on schedule to complete the program with an estimated cost of $23 million. Looking forward, we are on track to complete the Smooth Streets program and will continue the pavement management program by performing preventative maintenance and rehabilitation to slow deterioration. We are looking for guidance from council on how to fund the city's paving program going forward. On the next two slides, different funding strategies will be presented for your consideration. So, Public Works has analyzed three different funding strategies over the next 15-year period. The first one is to fund the program at the current funding amount. This strategy would require annual funding of $8.1 million, and the goal will be to maintain an average PCI between 65 and 70 throughout the 15-year period, which is in the good category. The scenario 2 is maintaining an average PCI above 60, which is in the middle of the good category. This strategy would require annual funding of $3 million. And the final scenario would be to completely eliminate failed streets. This strategy would result in 0 miles of failed street at the end of the 15-year period, and would require an annual funding of $10.9 million. So, we performed an analysis using the StreetSaver software and determined what the citywide average PCI and network condition distribution would be after the 15-year period for each scenario. The current condition is shown here in the table for reference. Some takeaways from this table. So while the current planned scenario keeps the majority of the city's street segments in the very good category, it reduces the number in the good category and increases the number of failed street segments, which will be expensive to reconstruct in the future. Even at the program's current funding level, we are unable to sustain a current citywide average PCI of 70 at the end of the 15-year period, and the number of failed streets will continue to increase. For the maintain-average-PCI-above-60 scenario, at the end of the 15-year period, the citywide average PCI is 58, which is considered in the middle of the good category. It is slightly lower than a goal of 60, and the number of miles in the poor and failed conditions is more than double than what is currently in those categories. This will cause an increase in costs after the 15-year horizon. More to come on that in the next slide. The citywide PCI average for eliminate-failed-street scenario is in the very good category at the end of the 15-year period and results in no street segments being in the poor and failed categories. In summary, these scenarios illustrate that if we do not increase our annual budget and investment in pavement management now, the overall condition of the system will continue to degrade and restoration will be significantly more expensive later on. So, we did a calculation in the StreetSaver program to calculate the deferred maintenance, or a backlog of cost, to restore all street segments to good or very good condition after the 15-year period for each of the scenarios. As you can see, there is significant value of keeping the program funded at the existing funding level at minimum, as reducing the annual funding to $3 million would create an additional $119 million in deferred maintenance after the 15-year period. There is also significant cost savings overall by investing more funds annually into the pavement program within the next 15 years to eliminate failed streets rather than deferring the maintenance into the future. We can invest an additional $2.8 million per year, $42 million over 15 years, instead of spending $131 million later to reconstruct these failed streets. Another strategy to extend pavement life is to enhance our existing trench standard. As mentioned previously, utility trench cuts are a significant factor in pavement deterioration as these cuts into the pavement section allow for water infiltration into the subgrade, and these trenches can settle at a different rate than the rest of the roadway, causing dips and potholes over time if they aren't compacted and bridged to our city standards. Our current standard is applied to all trenches regardless of depth and likely does not provide effective protection from trench settling. A University of Iowa study shows that settlement risk is reduced by widening the trench restoration limits and that the deeper the trench is, the wider the trench restoration should be to minimize that settling. Public Works is looking to revise its standard trench detail to correlate with this concept. So, the next steps. We're looking for council's feedback on the staff-proposed funding plan, which is to maintain an annual funding of $8.1 million a year. Staff will then return with proposed funding amounts in our CIP budget, and will also return with the enhanced trench repair standard for consideration. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for a very enlightening presentation. Much appreciated. It looks like we have a question from Councilmember Hedges to kick us off.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Very good. So, I'm very interested in this. I ran the, or I was chair of the Measure S Committee that passed the Measure S funding, and part of our promise was to end failed streets in order to get the voters to vote for it. I think the third most important thing in funding for residents, I'm sure Drew can correct this if I'm mistaken, would be fire, police, and then streets. And I would be in favor of the $10.1 million. I think it's cheaper to pay more in the short run than it is to pay a lot more in the long run. It just makes more sense to me. I would like to see these failed streets done as soon as possible, because that was the promise we made. I imagine we've got some problems from the latest storm we've had. I noticed some of the streets have suffered. Is that true?
Yes, with rains causes a significant amount of potholes and more alligator cracking and dips, so we're definitely working with our O&amp;M staff to get some of that fixed.
Yeah, does that in any way affect the plan that we have here before us?
No, not really. Anything that's just too big for our O&amp;M staff to do, we will incorporate in an upcoming paving project and take care of it with a bigger contractor.
So you'd mentioned that you try to do bike lanes where possible when repairing the streets. The reason I brought that up is I got, I think, more than one email that somebody, some people, I won't mention any names, wanted to use a small amount of the funding to bike lanes, but we're doing that anyway from what I hear from you.
Hi, good evening. Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director. So, the funding strategy proposed focuses on pavement needs. As Stephanie described, when we have a pavement project, we coordinate with our other divisions. And so, we then look at the prioritization for bicycle and pedestrian projects and allocate additional funding so that we can really work on a complete street. But the strategy being proposed only focuses on the pavement. When we design and develop projects, they are done in coordination so that we can take a look at other elements and then finalize the budgeting requests.
Thanks, Azalea. That makes me feel pretty good. So we're getting, at least where possible, some additional bike lanes. I think that's everything I have for right now.
Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Nash.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Stephanie, thank you very much for the presentation. I have been on the Measure S Oversight Committee, so I know how much detail work goes into this, and thank you to you and your colleagues. I have two questions. Number one, you show that there are five miles that are failed streets that are not included in the Safe Streets program currently. Is that correct?
There are five, so I think I'd have to check my slide one more time.
I'm just wondering...
There are some miles that are not included because they weren't failed in 2013, so they've failed since, so... Let me see. Yeah, so the five that, so there's six miles total part of the smooth streets, but yes, we have some more miles that aren't included in the smooth streets.
And is there, are they in a particular section of the city or are they across the city?
They're spread out.
Spread out, okay. And am I also to assume that this analysis and the need for incremental funding, if we wanted to eliminate all the failed streets, that's because the projected Measure S funding is not sufficient?
Right, because it only covers the ones identified in 2013.
But when the ones in 2013 are fixed, we're still getting Measure S funding coming in?
Yes, so then we'll be able to handle some of those streets that do need the reconstruction.
But not all of them?
Not all of them.
Okay, great. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Hi Stephanie.
Hi.
Just a quick question on utility projects. Are the utilities being held accountable for when they tear up the streets repeatedly? Meaning, I live on Delaware Street, which is a pretty major street through San Mateo, and in the last 10 years, they've torn up our street 14 times. So I'm just curious, is there any accountability to that? I mean, it seems like they pretty much do what they want, and I'm wondering if we can have some kind of grabback for them when they are continually having to come back and reopen the streets.
Yeah, we do have a moratorium period after we go, and that's why we try to get them in before, and we do extensive coordination, but I can only do so much as they work with me as well, that we reach out with them, we tell them what streets we're going to pave, and they need to get in there and get out before we pave so that we can have a clean surface. And then when they have to go in after we pave, within the next three years of the moratorium, they have to have a reason stated in the municipal code to even dig up the street, and then they have to do a full-width restoration. I think there's an intersection on Delaware, I want to say maybe it's Delaware and 16th, where they've had to repave the entire intersection once or twice because they keep digging it up for exactly what you're saying. So yes, they are being held accountable for their trench cuts.
Good evening, Stephanie. Thank you for your presentation. Please pardon me for what may sound like an odd question, but was the information related to the different funding options and the idea that council was to be weighing in on a direction forward in the agenda item?
Yeah, so it's a study session, so we're seeking feedback on direction. We provided an update on the Smooth Streets program two years ago, so we were due for another update to you all. Last time, we presented different scenarios in terms of the next 15 and 30 years, so this is the follow-up to that in terms of seeking direction for our capital improvement program budgeting.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I'll ask Rich Lee, our Director of Finance, to join us as well. I think for the benefit of our new council members, it might be helpful to talk about, you know, what a decision point like this looks like in the context of our larger budget. And so if you decide to do something like this, you know, we all want to promise smooth streets yesterday, right? But I think, you know, this is a fiscal policy decision, and when we commit to something, we're committing to potentially not doing something else or delaying something else. And so it helps to have, you know, a more comprehensive vantage point in making some of these decisions. So would you mind, Rich, some Budget 101?
My pleasure. Oh, good evening. Rich Lee, City's Finance Director. So what's going on right now as we prepare for the first study session for the council, which is coming up in April, the city has a CIP committee that consists of the city manager, the assistant city manager, myself, the Parks and Recreation Director, the Public Works Director, and we are looking at all of the city's funding sources for all of the capital improvement projects that are in the next five years. And the general fund being a major contributor to the capital improvement plan, I'll be honest, there are many projects that are listed on there right now that it would be great that if we could bring to fruition for the council and for the community. We just simply don't have enough resources to do that. So this would, if the council were to direct staff to prioritize smooth streets, there's something on that list that is going to have to be taken off of that. So it's a matter of competing demands that we have to make a decision.
And we've talked about this before when we were discussing Measure CC, right? And so just for the public and for reminding everyone and our council, the majority except for, I believe, one council member strongly supported Measure CC, and that has, you know, that has brought in an additional $4.8 million to the city. And part of that conversation and the basis for doing that was because of the unfunded capital improvement projects, which I believe last year totaled $250 million. Is that right?
If I may, through the mayor, I just wanted to clarify something that you said about Measure CC. The analysis showed that on average, if it were to voters approve, which it did, it could bring up to $4.8 million per year. That is depending on if transactions are subject to it come to fruition. And to date, since the Measure CC has passed and effective on December 22nd, there have been no transactions subject to it. I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but that's coming up for the council later this evening, a discussion on that topic.
Absolutely, and we'll be talking about that. But in terms of the understanding the total budget picture of unfunded capital improvements at $250 million, and any increase to the Smooth Streets program will effectively reduce resources for unfunded capital improvement projects. I just want that to be explicitly clear in this decision point when we're weighing in. Would anyone care to, I guess unless we have further questions, it's time to open a public comment. This is the time for the public to weigh in on this issue.
Thank you very much. And are there any members of the public in person who would like to speak to this issue? I don't see any in the audience, so I'm going to go to the remote. Right now, I have four hands raised. If you'd like to speak to this issue, if you could please raise your hand. And our first speaker, we have right now four speakers. So we'll do three minutes, and our first speaker is Mark Elliott. Mr. Elliott, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, City Council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Mark Elliott, and I live in the Bay Meadows neighborhood. I wrote you a note on Friday about this session, so in the interest of time, I won't reiterate that. I'd just like to say that I think it's very important that the city consider rebalancing the transportation funding. There's a strategic plan, planning session coming up on Saturday where this might be discussed, and I know you won't be voting on anything explicitly tonight, but, because it's a study session, but it's still probably premature to make any tentative decisions about full funding of pavement projects, repaving projects, before the strategic planning process happens. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Sakuta.
Good evening. Now, Rick Sakuta, Marina Lagoon, San Mateo. I just wanted to note that some of our sidewalks are in very dangerous condition, especially for our seniors and the disabled. And this is primarily from tree roots, both on public and private property that are lifting the pavement. So I would ask that staff develop some options to see how we can get our sidewalks repaired. I was told in the past that residents could call Public Works and they would just take care of it rather than... care of it, rather than trying to get the homeowner to do the work. Thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jacqueline. Please go ahead.
Yes, hello. This is Michael Grubbs, speaking on Jacqueline's computer. My question is on the dollar amounts presented by the engineer for the street repairs either now or in the future. Are those net present value dollars, or have they been adjusted for inflation in the future?
Yes, that's a great question.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Jeff Tarantino with Friar and Loretta, supporting Stephanie and the team on the project. So the Streetsaver Program does include inflation. It uses 2% inflation annually, so the numbers that are being presented are future dollars, including inflation.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yiming Lu. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Yiming. I'm a student, and I cycle to school every day in San Mateo. I'm asking the council today to reconsider the amount of budget allocated towards paving and repaving our streets. Through the presentation we've seen today, we can see that paving is the elephant in the budget with around $22 million of funding in the last three fiscal years. I'm asking the council today to explore alternatives to continuing this level of funding and to think outside this binary of funding more paving now versus funding even more paving in the future. While it is true that paving roads early may reduce long-term costs, I think we need to rethink the purpose of this funding and zoom out. What if we instead chose to divest some funding towards implementation of quick-build projects later on in the Bike Master Plan, towards greener infrastructure, towards better stormwater management? I'm asking the council to explicitly chip this type of money from paving to these initiatives, because if we keep on funding the paving and repaving of these roads, we further subsidize the usage of cars, which starts this vicious feedback loop of more cars, more paving. Cars are only getting heavier and heavier, and if we keep on choosing to pave and repave, we're implicitly encouraging more driving, which will chip away at the city budgets in the future and increase congestion within the city, as well as making cyclists, like walking and cycling harder, like myself. I think we should approach this considering the safety of multimodal transit users as well, and the management of stormwater. Shifting funding towards better stormwater management will improve paving in the future as well as reduce property damage. We could reduce the paving budget just by 10% and explicitly shift that towards the rapid implementation network of the Bike Master Plan over three years. From a holistic perspective, how many miles of the streets are at risk for cyclists? How many miles of the streets have unsafe designs? For example, where the bike lanes are next to the cars, so it's easy to get dored. The council should consider setting better standards for streets, such as for future streets that are being repaved to have the bike lane be to the right of the cars next to the curb, rather than how it is now where the cyclist can be easily hit by a door. Council members, I urge you to consider shifting the budget away from this vicious cycle of paving and repaving, and instead towards safety measures for pedestrians and cyclists, as well as stormwater management, which will lower costs long-term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sean Likeson. Go ahead, Sean.
Good evening, council members. Wanted to ask the council to please consider devoting the budget that is in consideration tonight away from repaving as much as we can. As spoken about by previous commentators, even a reduction of the paving budget by 10% frees up millions of dollars that can be used as a source of stable funding year over year for continuing to build out a better pedestrian and cycling city. I also just wanted to reiterate, as part of what the council will be looking at tonight, is how funds from Measure CC will be used on the agenda. Specifically, it does state that there currently, you know, is no funding that qualifies from Measure CC, and that is supposed to be funding that would be used towards these cycling and pedestrian, other traffic development, traffic demand management projects. So without stable funding, you know, we're going to continue to fall behind on getting our pedestrian and bicycling master plan funded and built in a timely manner. And so I would just like to wrap things up here and urge the council to think ahead to the future in how these repaving funds are truly going to benefit everyone in the city, knowing that vehicles are getting heavier and heavier as we move towards more hybrid and electric vehicles. Those lithium batteries are going to double or triple the weight of our cars and pickup trucks and buses, and that will put additional pressure on the roads. And so I think we need to think about how can we better serve other modes of transportation as much as we can. Think of it as an investment to the future where we're not needing to spend so much of our budget on just repaving roads over and over again, just to see these roads torn up by the same vehicles over the next few years. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, the head of all the public comment speakers.
Great. And I think one of the questions that I heard from the public and embedded in some of the comments from Mr. Sekuda was talking about the need for pedestrian repairs in terms of our sidewalks, and just, you know, generally how, you know, clarifying how we actually fund our master bike plan. And so when we're looking at, you know, repaving the street, we're coordinating with the department, we're coordinating with available resources, most of those resources being grant-based and very limited, right? And so for our community members like Mark Elliott, who's been involved in the bicycle master plan for, Mark, tell me if I haven't got this right, around 15 years now, the question over, you know, 15 years later is, well, when is the funding going to come, right? Because we've been relying on grants to augment our core services. And so what I hear from the community is, you know, is that there are competing priorities. There's the priority of, you know, us saving money in terms of the long-term maintenance of our roads. There's the unfunded capital improvement projects, and then there's the underfunded pedestrian and bicycle master plan that, you know, that community has been waiting around for, for 15 years, 15-plus years. So that, I hope, will help frame some of the comments, and so I'll open it up to comments from council now. Oh, closing public comment, opening up to the council. Who would like to start?
Okay, thank you to the public comments and to the mayor for her comments and clarifying questions. You know, I wanted to mention that I'm happy to see our failed streets getting repaired due to staff work and a council priority to get us back on track, saving money and increasing the overall quality of our roads in the long run. I'm glad that we've done what we can to include bike-ped project improvements into such projects in parallel. Of course, we need a robust bike master plan to allow for that, and so I thank staff for helping us create that and making sure we get the most value out of each of these projects as possible. And I'm hoping that we can turn more attention to bike-ped projects after the Smooth Streets Program has completed. I'm a little troubled by, you know, this conversation at times seeming to pit road safety and maintenance versus bike-ped projects, as if that's, you know, we can only have one or the other. And, you know, just as a reminder, for those who do cycle on our streets, good roads are very helpful for bicyclists, too. And we would not want to be riding on failed streets everywhere. So I think, to the mayor's point, I'm hoping that there may be an opportunity for Measure CC funds to potentially help allow for both to coexist, that we could potentially pursue some increased bike-ped funding for projects to get us to completing high priority and even medium-high priority projects in our bike master plan, while potentially considering an overall pavement management plan that allows us to avoid having to put ourselves in the same situation in 15 years. I think another issue that arises with smooth streets is, at some point, residents, the council, you know, felt that our streets were failing too often, and it was costing too much, and we got ourselves into a rut. So I wouldn't want us to find ourselves there again. I think one additional option that would be appreciated when we look at these options for consideration going forward would be, you know, where we were before smooth streets, to get a sense, for example, of like how different the scenario two would be from that, because if scenario two were to eventually get us into a similar position as 2013, then that, I think, would not be a very good position, and that would be helpful for us to learn. I guess I'll just apologize, because I think when I initially read the item and saw the word informational and did not see the exact options presented, it wasn't immediately clear to me that we were going to be asked to weigh in on that at this time. And so I'll leave my comments there and apologize for not preparing more, but we'll go back and chew on this some more and may have to provide some additional comments afterward. Thank you.
Stephanie, would you care, or either of you, would you care to kind of help frame or contrast where we were in 2013 relative to some of the options? And actually, it might be helpful to look at the three options on the slides, so that we can see that in front of us.
So if I can provide some, just a little bit more background. So back in 2013, so the city had a difficult scenario with, as you saw in Stephanie's presentation, the longer we defer maintenance, the more expensive it gets. So over the last, now I think, six years, we've been focusing on restoring, or reconstructing these failed street segments. So we, the 8.1 million a year that would maintain the existing funding right now, that combines pavement management with smooth streets, would, you know, would basically 15 years from now, put us in a better situation than we were back in 2013. The one thing, well, a few things that I will highlight, these numbers do not include, we've been, so we've been making periodic presentations to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission on our bike-ped efforts. We are, so the proposal here is the foundation, right? The foundation that's needed for these bike-ped projects. We do have the Traffic Impact Fee effort. We're actually including the entire cost of the bicycle master plan as part of that, and we'll be returning to council on that at a, you know, future effort. But right now, we have an interim TIF, and the intent is to go back and actually have a TIF that covers the bicycle master plan in its entirety. But because we cannot implement all these projects at once, the proposal here for discussion was to really lay out the foundation that's needed for all those projects, future projects, as well as the fact that we're embarking on complete streets right now and the plan in terms of making our, having the foundation laid out for the future bicycle and pedestrian implementation needs in the future. So this is just the foundation.
But if I may, through the chair, could you maybe just elaborate a little on, like, for example, from a PCI average perspective, maybe where, about where we were in 2013, just to help compare and contrast with, say, like, this scenario two, average PCI over 60?
We do not have that information in terms of what the, we know that we had at that point, 17 miles of failed streets. Is that the right number?
It's 22 miles.
22 miles. That's what we, so what we do know is that back in 2013, we had 22 miles of failed streets. What that average PCI was back then, we would have to go back and obtain that information.
We can figure that out and let you guys know that one.
So on, I think it's just fair to say it was worse. Right.
Are there comments?
Just really more some concerns. You know, I supported funding of Measure, I've supported Measure CC, but I was skeptical, and I still remain skeptical as to whether or not we think we're going to be getting a lot of revenue there to help us. And then additionally, I see that one of the slides you had shows that we have a percentage of gas tax, but as we approach, I think we're like 8% or 9% people now with electric vehicles, I'm assuming we're not getting a gas tax, and the trend is going to be over the next, well, till 2030, will be that the gas tax funding will be going away. What percentage was the gas tax again? I'm sorry, could, do we pull that? And then the only other thing was, is I heard that we're using an inflation rate of 2%, and I'm obviously concerned that inflation seems to be going at a faster rate than that. So those are just more concerns of, from a fiscal perspective. So I mean, we're going to lose 13, close to 13% of our incoming revenue there.
Well, it won't go down to zero. It'll potentially be diminished.
Yeah, it won't go down to zero, but it'll, it's going to decline down.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes, thank you. I just piggyback onto Rob's comment. Not only is electric cars affecting us, but the increased mileage that's required of automobiles coming to California, and the failing of the older automobiles that use far more fuel will also affect it. So it really is going to be diminished. There's all kinds of debate going on now, how we're going to replace the funding. So I still would like to do the 10.1 million. I think it is the economic thing to do, but I understand balancing this, so I would go along the staff's recommendation. Also, I've biked everywhere I went the first nine years in San Mateo, or used Caltrain, so I'm having an affinity for bike lanes. But I also have an affinity, as Adam said, for filling those potholes, throw a bicyclist and cause injury. So I think that the staff has done a great presentation. I think I understand it, and I've followed it all along because of my time on Measure S Oversight Committee and working to pass the measure. So, thank you.
So just to, so I heard from Councilmember Hedges, do you mind bringing up the slides again? I heard from Councilmember Hedges that his preference or his direction is to increase the funding. I'm not sure I heard a clear direction from some of the other council members.
If I may, through the chair, yeah, my preference is the increase, the funding, but I would, based on staff recommendations, vote for...
At this point, there are newest staff recommendations that are asking for a direction.
Current plan.
Yeah, I think I would be in favor of maintaining the current plan levels, partially because Measure S was voted in by the residents specifically to fund failed streets. Secondly, because of what Director Mitch said, that we really need those streets to be at a certain level, excuse me, to do all the other things we want to do. I would also be very much in favor of seeing if there are other areas, whether it's Measure CC or elsewhere, to look at not only doing bike lanes when we do the paving, which I think is a very efficient way of going about it, but looking at where we can change the way we do bike lanes. One of the callers suggested putting the cars further out into the road and having the bikes near the sidewalk as additional protection. And I think the more we can do of that, the better. And I think the more we can do of that, the better. But I agree with the sentiment that the good roads are fundamental to our city, to our residents, to our cyclists, to our walkers, and so I would be in favor of maintaining the current level.
I find myself in agreement with that. I think, I think sticking with the current plan, and hopefully using that additional funding towards other projects, such as bike lane funding and pedestrian funding, would be more beneficial. Ideally, I know the residents would like to have every street be perfect and have it all, but I know we also can't have it all. So I would say probably sticking with the current plan would be my direction or choice.
So, at the moment, I find myself leaning more toward the scenario two or three million a year, because there have been some public comments about, you know, the other things we could potentially do with the funding, but I, as I feel the mayor may have pointed out, it's more than just bike-ped that we haven't yet found funding for. And so, you know, I guess, just on a high level at the moment, I feel that, you know, I would be interested in eliminating failed streets at 10.9 million a year if all our other priorities could be funded. And I see the value in opting for that as opposed to current plan, in that if you only spend a little more than current plan, you can get higher value. But there's, there's quite a bit unfunded for us to be considering, and so, you know, to me, I think, you know, I appreciate Azalea's comments about the traffic impact fee possibly including bike lane projects down the road. I think I'm looking with interest to some upcoming discussions related to Measure CC funding options, our strategic plan, and, and the capital improvement plan, to get a, maybe a more holistic sense of what we might be missing out of, on, if we opt for a current plan or eliminating failed streets. And with that in mind, I guess at the moment, that has me leaning more towards scenario two.
My, my strong preference would be to have staff come back to us with an inch, like, a further analysis of what a moderately scaled-back current plan could be, that might free up some funding for things like, like our sidewalk improvements. So, at this point, yes, and Azalea, would you like to share?
Sure. If I may, in terms of sidewalks, we have a 15-year sidewalk program that is now at the end of, you know, if it's life, you know, sidewalks are the responsibility of property owners. So I think that is another challenge that we do face in terms of make, taking, you know, mate, finding the funding to then do significant improvements on sidewalks that per state law are the responsibility of the private property owner. We do, in Public Works, we do address dripping hazards, we do interim repairs, but, you know, that's something that we will be coming back to you all as well, in terms of finding, funding for something that is, you know, per state law, not, not, you know, puts that responsibility on the property owner.
So, do you have what you need from us?
So, if I, so, so based on that, right now, our intent was to update you all on a five-year plan that we also presented last year as part of the budget process. This was to, you know, clarify the continued direction on that. What I'm hearing is a reassessment of our, like, over $300 million in unfunded needs, and so, our, you know, attempt here was to provide a strategy where we would come back with, like, a trench detail, provide to you an explanation for the foundation on all these other project, these other efforts, in terms of the fact that streets, we do need safe streets for bicycle projects. There is, you know, currently no funding for sidewalks, given that this 15-year program has reached its, the end of its life. So, I may, I think I need a little bit more from you all in terms, because the needs are incredible. And so, in terms of us coming back and having that discussion, I think it's a bigger discussion in terms of our overall city, city budget. So I don't know if you want us in Public Works to talk about the public realm, and that is also infinite, you know, there are a lot of things, or how you might propose us coming back as part of the larger budget discussion. I mean, if I may, I think that, you know, this, this decision point, you know, in a silo, it seems like it's challenging. I don't hear a strong confidence to, you know, to provide clear direction at this point, given some of the other variables. And so, you know, I heard to sort of stay the course, one, I want to increase, and two, sort of, maybe there's, maybe there's an opportunity for exploring sort of a scaled version, and then what would that, what would, what kind of opportunity resource would that provide us? And I think that, you know, in terms of just getting our head around the holistic picture of unfunded capital improvement need, and some of the, you know, those, those lines of what is responsible, you know, what is the responsibility of the homeowner versus what is the responsibility of the city, and more importantly, like, what is the responsibility of, you know, us as a community in terms of meeting unmet need? I live in North Central, where many community members just don't have the resources or ability to, you know, to hire and repair their, their failed sidewalks, and, and need additional support and resources, where there aren't any. And so, you know, I think that it's, what I hear is sort of a desire for more holistic information, and to provide better, more clear direction, balancing out some of the, you know, the trade-offs. So, we won't solve it all.
Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Corbett has his hand raised. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So, yes, based on the feedback that we've gotten, I think that we can come back as we talk about the budget and the five-year capital improvement program, and put this into greater context with some of the trade-offs, based on what we've heard tonight. So I do think, if that is the desire of council, this was, you know, one, one step in a, in a larger process of allocating a significant amount of money towards pavement rehabilitation and reconstruction. And so, from, from what I've gathered from council's feedback tonight, again, we can bring these choices back with a little greater context, as we talk about the five-year CIP and the budget.
If I could, through the mayor, I think that's a great discussion. I would want to make sure that we have limitations around it, because we could be talking forever about what our options are. And I think I heard from three members, a pretty firm commitment to making sure that the streets are taken care of as a fundamental for everything else, and two others who agreed with that, but also saw the need to do some more analysis and looking at trade-offs. So, I would want to make sure that if we were to do that, it was with a presumption that the priority is to make sure the streets are safe and paved, and then what are the the options for other things, as opposed to throwing everything up in the air. I would look at this as really a core anchor principle. Thank you.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yeah, I'll just say that you can actually tell the economic viability of a community by the condition of their streets. It's, because that's usually the first thing that people want repaired, and when it can't be repaired, it really shows the economic viability of the city, so I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Great. I think we can leave it at that, and move on to item number three, City Manager Recruitment. We have a presentation from our Director of Human Resources, Teresa Abrahamson. Thank you, Azalea and Stephanie.
Teresa Abrahamson, Human Resources Director. I have a short presentation here, just to kind of run through some options we have. All right. So, as you know, City Manager Drew Corbett is retiring on June 30th in 2023. Per the San Mateo Charter, Section 3.01, the city council appoints the city manager. City manager serves at the pleasure of the council, and then the city manager's minimum qualifications is that they're appointed solely on the basis of the city manager's executive and administrative qualifications. So here's a recommended process. Is the human resource director, we hire an executive recruiting firm, the council forms a two-person subcommittee. All council members help inform what are the most important skills, knowledge, and attributes for a city manager for the city of San Mateo. The recruiter prepares marketing materials and advertising plan for subcommittee review, based on council members' input, and then the recruiter, candidate outreach and application. I think that's one of the most important, is the recruiter on the candidate outreach, because when you're recruiting for a level such as city manager, there are many applicants who may not be out there looking, and that recruiter has their database, and may have to go out and call individuals and kind of encourage them to apply and talk to them about it. And then, the rest of the process is the recruiter will screen the applications and make assessments. The finalist applications are to, they'll present to the subcommittee to determine who should be invited to those final interviews, and then interviews of the finalists are at the full city council. City council selects the top candidate, we do go to background checks, and then employment Just for example, we've used executive recruitment in these, for the city manager in 2018, when Drew Corbett was selected, when we went for the police chief recruitment in 2019, we did the same process for the city attorney recruitment in 2020, and for the Parks and Recreation Department head in 2023. And then, what I'm looking for from council, after, I can answer any questions you have, is approval or modification of the recommended process I've just reviewed for recruiting the city manager, and then identification of two members for the subcommittee, if desired. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the time to ask questions. Questions from council.
Teresa, I saw in the report, or rather, the guidebook that was included, a note about determining who may run the city on July 1st, and, and I was just curious if, it sounds as though that's not something that needs to be determined right now. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We'll go through the process, and if the candidate hasn't been selected by then, the council has options, and one of the things in the Assistant City Managers job specification, it says that they can take on the, the city manager role, has, has, has needed or appointed by the council, so that's an option. There's other things that you can do, is put in someone interim in the, in the process. It could be someone else from the city here, or someone from the outside.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. Let's open up to public comment.
If you'd like to comment on this, please raise your hand now. I have two speakers with hands raised, I have no speaker slips in the room. Please go ahead, Danielle. You should unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening. So, I actually just want to start by saying I've been in executive recruiting for over 10 years, so I'm pretty familiar with this topic. Given what happened on December 31st with the flooding, it would be great if the city would consider maybe having a private citizen or some residents on a subcommittee. I think that in order to restore confidence with individual residents, we need to know that the city manager that's replacing Drew, and thank you for everything you've done, but is someone that will be behind the residents and support us, and make sure that our issues are really being heard and addressed. And I think that's it, and I hope that you please consider that as an option, because it's very important to us. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Danielle. The next speaker is Jacqueline. Please go ahead, Jacqueline.
Yes, this is, excuse me, Mike Grum again on Jacqueline's computer. Two questions. What is the cost of the executive search firm, and what is the guarantee if the person who is hired is either fired or quits within a certain amount of time after the fee is paid?
Teresa, please. No, we can respond to questions at the end of public testimony. Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Sakuta.
Oh.
Sorry, Rick, please go ahead again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes. In the past, when Larry Patterson was hired, several members of the public were included on the interview panel, as well as city staff, and I believe department heads. Of course, we had to sign confidentiality agreements, but the benefits are community engagement and buy-in to the process, transparency, and another window for citizens into the actual workings of our city government. So when citizens get to participate, there's a much greater appreciation for the process. So I hope you would consider that, and I think the comment made earlier by Danielle is well-taken, that it would help to restore some confidence in the process. And I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no other speakers.
Teresa, do you mind answering that question about the cost?
Yeah. We just did a quick, kind of got a proposal from someone, it's probably about $25,000 to do a recruitment, and then the question about what happens if the selected individual resigns or is let go. Most recruitment firms will, based on what happens within that first year, will give you a discount of like 25% to 50% on the next recruitment that happens.
Also, would you mind answering some of the questions about how, in the past, the city has engaged the public in hiring process for some of our executive members?
What I'm aware of, since I've only been here for my seventh year as with Larry Patterson, I wasn't involved in that, but there is the option to do community survey, or to have a community outreach meeting and get input, and that's something that the recruiter who's hired would do.
And that's something that has been in place for, at least, the last several hires, is that right? I remember we did it for the chief.
Yeah. I don't know if it was done for Prasanna's recruitment, but I believe it was done for Drew's recruitment.
Drew and, and chief. So we'll close public comment, and this is the time for council to provide some input.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I think the first question that was asked in the preparatory documents were, should we hire a recruiter or do it in-house? And I very strongly believe we should hire a recruiter, and this is going to be a very important... And this is going to be a very important, probably one of the most important things that we do as a city. And while I admire the staff skills, I think there is a real desire to have a specialist come in and help. So that would be my, my hope. Then also, in terms of, you know, do we, how do, how do we involve the community? I would be very much in favor of supporting community input upfront in figuring out what the qualities of successful city manager are and taking lots of stories about where the public thinks things have gone well and where the public thinks we need to change or we need to do better. I mean, that's a very important part of it. I think it might be very difficult if you, it might extend the process and also maybe not have the most successful process if there were citizens involved in the actual interview process. I mean, one of the reasons that we are elected is to represent our community and even more so in terms of district elections. So I would hope that the community would have faith that the people on this council would represent and be their voices, but very much to get them involved in the beginning, in the input phase.
Councilmember Hedges.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to say that I'm sorry we're going to have to do this. Drew's done an excellent job. And I'm sure we'll get a good city manager through the process. I'm in favor of using a recruiter. And so, but raising one issue based on what some of the public comment has been. I was looking at the conditions in number six bullet point candidate interviews. It says recruiters arrange for interviews and development of selection procedures for the finalist candidates, structured interviews with the full city council department heads and other stakeholders. I would say other stakeholders would be members of the community. I would suggest that we have one person from each district. It's worked in the past. I've been on two, one for Larry and one for the current county manager. And in each time we sign confidential agreements, I've actually got a copy of the one that I can provide to you from the county. And we can even put in, and it says, basically what it's saying, you can't reveal if you agree to do this, the names of anybody involved. So I think it's a great idea. I hope that I can get the other council members to agree that we should have members of the community that at least get to make a a recommendation to us. And I, or at least to the two member committee that's going to be interviewing from the city council. So that's the only change I would see. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I I was prepared to say that I had no issues moving ahead with a process similar to last time, including public involvement, which we had last time, as the mayor noted through her question. I was prepared to say I agreed with everything the deputy mayor said. And then, you know, I heard what councilmember Hedges had to say about including residents as potential additional stakeholders. I find it a bit odd to include one resident per district with some idea of representation, given that, as the deputy mayor just noted, the council currently has five residents who represent those districts. So that sounds a little superfluous or duplicative, but I'm not strongly against it. So those are my comments.
Would you like to provide direction?
I thought all in all, the plan looks great. I think we need to start moving on it as quickly as possible. So ideally, we don't have to have an interim city manager. But I also feel if we're rushed, we should have a interim city manager. I, I didn't really think, kind of similar what Adam said. I didn't think much about having an individual from each district, although I wouldn't be opposed to that. But I don't know that it's necessary for reasons stated. And other than that, I have no other additions.
Great. I, I personally would prefer maybe some stakeholder interviews or a survey, something that is a little bit more statistically defensible in terms of providing community input. And I, I feel that, you know, some of them, my concern about having community members on a panel, even though there might be an NDA, is that it could have a chilling effect on recruitment. And if candidates are being actively recruited for positions and then get revealed that that actually may, may narrow the field, may narrow the pool. And so I do hold that concern, just in terms of making sure that we have integrity of process and the best possible pool of candidates. So I think that there's probably other ways to, to ensure that community voices are heard and community input is heard in the process. And so my, my strong preference would be to resort to a, a survey and perhaps some targeted stakeholder interviews. And I absolutely support working with a consulting firm. Do you have what you need?
The subcommittee? If you guys want to have the subcommittee, who, if you, who would those two members be?
I would suggest myself and councilmember Hedges.
I heartily endorse this recommendation.
I do as well.
If I may speak?
I would agree, but I think councilmember Hedges wants to speak.
I will accept, but I think there's others on the city council that are well-prepared to do this, or maybe even better prepared, but I'll accept.
Thank you. And I, I never wanted to do this job without you, Drew. So I'm just holding on that maybe we'll have a change of heart. I haven't given up on you yet.
I, I think Drew has a, would like to comment or speak.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know, it does seem like, it doesn't seem like at this point there's consensus regarding the, you know, whether there'll be a community member panel or whether there'll be a different mechanism for input. What I would suggest, based on the composition of the subcommittee, since, you know, Mayor Lee suggested one, one way forward and councilmember Hedges suggested another way forward, that you, once, once we've got the recruiter on, that you all can have that conversation with the recruiter on what makes the most sense, you know, given everyone's desires and, and what you've heard tonight, if, if that works for you all.
If I may, through the chair, that works for me.
Perfect.
All right, I think I have what I need. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Thank you, Drew. Okay, moving on. Mr. City Manager, we have about 12 minutes left in the special meeting. Do we have sufficient time to take up the next item?
I can certainly get through the presentation and perhaps questions. And then maybe we could see where we are and whether we wanted to try to finish or whether we wanted to continue the rate, the special meeting until the end of the regular meeting.
Okay, I'd say let's move forward.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and get right into it then. Good evening. The item before you is the consideration of a special fund for the winter storms. So by way of background, at the last council meeting, the mayor requested council consideration of a relief fund for flood damage. And should council be interested in that? And there's really three main considerations for you all. Number one, the amount of a potential city contribution. Number two, how the relief funds would be administered. And number three, what would be the eligibility and criteria for folks receiving relief funding? So next slide, please. Thank you. So in terms of the amount of the city contribution, so we would need to get council direction on a possible city contribution. So does council want to utilize city funds? And if so, how much? Just to try to put some parameters around it. In speaking with Finance Director Lee and looking at, you know, our short and long-term operations as well as our capital needs, we did feel like up to 150,000 of general fund monies could be utilized for this purpose without having any sort of detrimental effect on operations or capital. Another council consideration related to, to funding is does council want to waive any permitting fees for flood-related damage that, that needs to be fixed that would require permit? There is a possibility that if council does want to waive those permit fees, that we may need to backfill those fees with general fund monies. We are still researching that. But if we can get, if we get direction on that tonight, when we come back with, with any resolutions to go forward, we should have that question fully answered. And then finally, with respect to dollars, the county was, of San Mateo was recently designated by FEMA as an area that's eligible for individual assistance for storm damage. The county is hosting a disaster recovery center at the event center every day, including the weekends, starting this Thursday and going until February 22nd. And the services there will include assistance with the FEMA process. Next slide, please. So in terms of the administration of relief funds, the city contribution could be administered internally or via a third party. Staff is recommending third-party administration. Existing staff capacity and expertise is a consideration as to why we're not recommending it be administered internally. We have experience with third parties administering funding on behalf of the city. As an example, Samaritan House distributed a significant amount of COVID relief funding back in 2020 for the city. Next slide, please. And then finally, I think this one was the most challenging to come up with. So we need to determine some sort of eligibility and criteria for the funding. And so I, I put together something for council consideration. As an, as an example, for instance, providing up to $1,000 for personal property or business inventory damage, up to 2,500 for personal property, business inventory or minor real property damage. And then up to 5,000 for personal property, business inventory, and major real property damage. And then expect there to be substantiation for that, including receipts for any funds that had already been spent and/or estimates for funds to be spent. And those estimates would need to come from, you know, for instance, a licensed contractor, if they were going to have the work done by a contractor. Next slide, please. And so just back to considerations for council. It would be if we're going to make a contribution, what would that amount be? Who would administer the relief funds? The city or a third party? And then what, what would be the eligibility and the criteria for the relief funding? That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
City Manager Corbett, when you were thinking this through, did you think about how we decide how to cut off? Because if, even if we said we wanted to contribute $150,000, and I'm not sure what the current amount privately raised is, but that still probably isn't enough for everyone who could qualify. So did you think about that?
I, I did. And, you know, that's, that largely went into the thinking behind the proposed tiers for the amounts. Based on, you know, some preliminary assessments that our building division has done, we do believe that a lot of the damage would, would fall into the personal property and minor property damage. Even for major damage, if we're, if we're looking at, you know, a $5,000 cap on that, you know, it's going to help, but it's not going to go all the way in, in fixing that damage. But hopefully it would, that along with some FEMA relief could, could go a long way to helping fix that damage. How, how subscribed this would be, it's, it's hard to say. But, you know, given, you know, the amount of funding, that we thought it would be appropriate for the city to consider contributing. And then the different tiers, we thought it balanced out, being able to provide a lot, a little bit of funding for a lot of people, if, if that answers your question.
Councilmember Hedges, questions?
I was just wondering, Drew. I know there were some people, a few, that were displaced from their homes. And I'm wondering if we should do a fourth category to have some small amount of money for those people that had to have hotel expenses?
Certainly, you know, if that is, is of interest to council, that could certainly be added very easily and could probably go into that first category.
Yeah, I would, I would consider that. I've actually visited a few properties where, where that actually took place. And obviously, we don't expect to make them whole, but at least tell them, give them something that'll help replenish their funds.
Question from councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. City Manager Corbett, as you noted, the county has qualified for FEMA assistance. And I know people are currently applying and there's a window to do so. For those applications, I understand there's sort of, I, I don't know if there's a requirement, if, if not a strong suggestion that those who have insurance coverage make a claim through their insurance provider first. And I was curious about whether this, if that would be a consideration for this as well?
You know, we could certainly make that one of the criteria. And I don't think that's a difficult task in, in terms of, you know, the checklist of things that would need to be done in order to become eligible. So if, if that's council's desire, we could certainly do that.
And I guess a similar question to that would be, maybe this is, well, no, I, I think would, would, would there be an opportunity to potentially prioritize those without insurance coverage?
Certainly, you know, you know, going to the item of the administration, you know, if we bring on a third party to administer, we're just going to need to be really clear with them what the criteria and the eligibility are. So we can, I mean, we can ultimately do anything. It's, it's then just become sort of the devils in the details and making sure they have what they need in order to distribute in a manner that, that council has prescribed.
Thank you. Those are my questions at this time.
Mr. Manager, I have just one question. And that would be if, say we decided to release or can distribute $50,000 in funds in addition to whatever's been raised, could we also put an additional 50,000 in reserve so that if we saw that we were having a large number of turnout for assistance, we could then say, well, we, we earmarked another 50,000 if we were having, you know, a need?
Yes, we could do that.
One more question?
I guess I'd like to see if I could ask a clarifying question related to that, which was if, if we were to approve 150,000 and that money was not all given out for, you know, by the third party, would it be possible to have a discussion with that third party about replacing funds?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not clear of replacing them in what sense?
Well, I mean, I think if, if we were to approve giving 150,000 and fewer than $150,000 were given out, would, would the city have no recourse to? given out, would the city have no recourse to get anything that wasn't spent back?
Certainly, we would, you know, we would take whatever council's desire is and we would write that into whatever agreement we had with the third party. So it could be up to $150,000 through a date certain, and any amount not spent at that time could be returned to the city. It could be up to $150,000 for this purpose. And any funds not utilized could be reallocated for a different purpose. So there's all kinds of options. It would just mean, it just would be a matter of putting specifically what we wanted to do into the agreement.
Thank you.
This is turning into a media conversation. I think we'll probably need to continue it. But I do note that there is one speaker. So if we wanted to open up for public comment very quickly. If you intend to comment on this, please raise your hand in the Zoom call. I have no public comments. Oh, I need a speaker slip, please. If I will take a remote comment first, the first person to speak will be the person who is not Jacqueline.
Yes. Yes, oh, this is Michael Grub again on Jacqueline's computer. A question regarding the contribution to these people. And the question or statement would be, if someone lived in a flood zone and knew they lived in a flood zone and decided not to purchase flood insurance, which is relatively inexpensive, should the council use other people's taxpayers' money to pay them when they had insurance available that they could have purchased? And I think that's particularly relevant when Mr. Lorraine suggested that the people who have insurance actually have to file for their insurance first, having taken the responsible action before they would be eligible for this other money. So I'd ask the council to please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in-person Owen Day.
Hello, members of council. Good evening. I'm just kind of improvising here because I have a couple of things I wanted to share. I'd say that I support strongly utilizing city for the full $150,000 to support flood victims. I'd say I strongly support councilmember Hedges' idea to create a fourth tier for people displaced from their homes due to the floods. And I support councilmember Lorraine's idea to prioritize the uninsured because there, it's not just a responsibility issue. There are many times that there are other factors in people's life affecting their ability to apply for insurance, to pay for insurance. And I think that that's important to take into consideration and understand that not everyone in San Mateo is fortunate enough to be able to have insurance because that's an incredibly hard thing to get in today's day and age. So I think that that's just important to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Through the mayor, if I may, it is now 7:02. And if we're going to adjourn this to the end of the regular meeting, I would invite anyone who wants to attend for the continued discussion to join the regular meeting Zoom, not this Zoom again. We will just continue on with the regular meeting Zoom at the end of the regular meeting. And we will need at least five minutes to stand up the regular meeting. Great. So we will end the study session and be back here in five minutes. Thank you all. Recording.